Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
After we open the first case and... Dave makes his comments. Good morning, I mean evening. I was a little confused. We're back home again. It feels good. And welcome to the Exeter Planning Board meeting of Thursday, February 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in downtown Exeter in the Noack Room, located at 10 Front Street in Exeter, New Hampshire. We'll start the meeting this evening by introducing the board. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board. And to my far right, Lance Lefler.
Dave Lefler, Select Board Representative.
Gwen English.
Dean Hubbard, Alternate Member.
Dean's new alternate member. Welcome aboard this evening.
John Gruder.
Marty Kennedy.
Marty also is an alternate member. First thing we have to do is continue the second case on the agenda this evening. Oh, Jen Martel just stepped in. So we're going to, I'm asking for a, we've been requested by the developer for the Stone Arch Development, located at 112 Front Street, to continue this case till the 23rd? 27th, thank you.
Planning Board meeting, 7:00 PM in the Noack Room.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, voice vote is all right here. So those in favor, please engage by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. So that is to be continued at our next meeting. We have minutes on the agenda, which I think will delay till after the meeting, so we can get things rolling here this evening. So, continued public hearing on the application of River Woods Company at Exeter for site plan review and wetland CUP application for the demolition of the existing administrative building and proposed construction of a new supportive living health center, along with associated site improvements, on the property located at 5 White Oak Drive. Subject property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District and are identified as tax map parcel number 97-23 and is planning board case number 24-16. And I'd ask Dave to start off, please.
Thank you. Just to recap, the applicant has appeared before the planning board at the November 21st, December 19th, and the January 23rd meetings. Site walk was conducted on December 12th. The board closed the public hearing at the January 23rd, 2025 meeting and voted to continue further discussion on the application until tonight's meeting. The town has received, well, in my memo, I said the town has received three separate correspondence from the public. Now it was four, because we received one after I wrote this memorandum earlier this week, from the public. So we received four correspondence from the public since the last meeting. I do not, as customary has happened before, once the public's hearing closed, I do not send you that information, because the public hearing has been closed. If the board wants to consider them, it has the option of reopening the hearing, but in order to do so, it needs to renotice the public and the abutters at the town's cost and then hold the public hearing at a later date. Would not be the 27th to meet any deadlines, statutory deadlines, 10 days would be one of the March meetings. And then, the board could limit reopening to the issues raised in those letters, but everyone would, you know, have the opportunity to comment on those issues should the board decide to do that. The applicant submitted revised plans and supporting documents dated January 15, 25, which have been provided to the board in the previous meetings. Thank you.
Okay. I believe the board would like to go into non-public session. John, would you make that motion, please?
Sure. I move that the planning board enter a non-public session under New Hampshire RSA 91-A colon 3, period 2, period parentheses, L. L. Consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Voice vote is adequate? No? Hand vote?
No, roll call.
Roll call. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sergeant at arms not here. Okay, so Nancy, how would you vote?
Yea.
Aye.
I'm not calling on the alternates, because they're not acting yet.
Aye.
Aye, by the way.
Aye.
Okay. Motion, any noes or stentions?
No.
All right. Motion's passed. We'll return downstairs, Dave?
Yeah, I would normally, we usually stay here, but due to the room size, I think we move. It's easier for us to move.
That's good. in our regulations and to follow the regulations that have been put in place for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any thoughts?
And if another letter comes in...
Microphone, microphone.
If another letter comes in two weeks?
Well, there's a limit, of course, but...
Yeah. How long will we open to look?
I think this is largely my concern about the need for a special exception, given what I've been able to find looking at all the paperwork we've gotten and doing some research online. I just feel that, I feel very strongly that Riverwoods has been granted two special exceptions, was granted two special exceptions for the administrative building. It's my opinion that in going forward, without being granted a special exception, they are in violation of the special exception that has already been granted to them. And it seems like there's a precedent that's been set. They've had two special exceptions. Why is this different from that? I feel strongly that that needs to be examined. And there has been, I haven't found any record of any talk of special exceptions, and I haven't seen any paperwork that indicates that a special exception was either not granted or said not to be necessary. If there is such a thing, a piece of paper or some notification out there, that would be something that would certainly put my mind at rest. And I questioned at the last meeting where the ball, I think I used the term where the ball had been dropped, and in looking, again, looking further at this, I believe it's the applicant's responsibility to ask or inquire of the special exception. I don't think it's Doug Eastman's job. I don't think it's Dave Sharple's job to inform them. I think it's their responsibility to make sure that they've gotten all the exceptions, variances, whatever, that they need. And we're here, they are here as advisors and to direct them if they need that or not. So I can't, I'm not throwing stones at Doug Eastman, or Dave, or anybody in the planning office. I think it was just overlooked and never inquired about. Again, that's my opinion. So it leaves me feeling...
So that's one action we could take. If we agree with your thinking.
Yeah, I'm one of many people on the board, and I've tried very hard to look for everything possible to answer questions that I've had, and these are still questions that I can't seem to find answers for. It's not easy. This is not an easy issue. And I felt that, you know, before, it feels like the putting the horse before the cart, which is what we should be doing, of course, but to start talking about conditions, talking about trees, talking about where we're going to pile snow on site, we're going to do any number of things, it seems that we need to come to some conclusion about this before we get into those details, because those details are going to, well, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
David, can you offer many, any information to help clarify to these people here who might not be aware of the special exemption requirements or whatever? Is there anything that, no?
No. I don't make that determination. That's zoning enforcement. As I stated at the last meeting, I'll reiterate that, I discussed it with Doug Eastman several months ago, that same exact question. He said one was not needed when we did the TRC review, and we moved on. That's all I can say.
And when did you find something that you think says that was needed, or just a gray area?
It was my opinion that it was needed based on what had happened with the administrative building. I mean, they came to the zoning board looking for permission to build the administrative building. The zoning board got comments from the abutters and from the public, and determined that they could build this building, but it could only be, and I'm not going to get the correct figure, but let's say 5,500 square feet, and they could only have 21 parking spaces and, or 15 parking spaces and 20 employees. And then they came back again, I believe, to be granted some relief in the size of the building, and they were allowed a little bit bigger building. So to me, that's, those were special exceptions that they needed. Why wouldn't they need something, a special exception for a building that's 10 times that size with 100 parking spaces and I'm not sure how many employees? And if they went forward with this, it seems that they would be violating the previous special, the conditions of the previous special exception. That's where this all started in my mind, was the initial project on that site.
Did you say they got the special assessment for the administrative building, but then they also added on to that?
They got another special exception to add a little bit more to that. And that was outlined in some paperwork that we got in our packet a month or so ago. And I did bring it up then, but just as a topic that should be looked at.
I believe they also got special exception for the ridge and for the boulders in that process. Am I correct in that, David?
Yeah.
So in some ways, it seems, it seems like the easiest thing to do, I mean, as I outlined in my letter, there are choices. You know, we could send it back, we could grant conditional approval on this with the condition that they go back to ZBA, or we could just ask them to go to ZBA and put this to rest. comment tonight, but...
But the guy that is our expert in-house says it's okay, Doug?
I don't know. I don't have anything that says, I don't have a piece of paper that says it's okay.
Right.
I know he drafted a letter that said that they didn't need a variance, but that's very different from a special exception. And I don't know that it ever came up in a conversation. Maybe it should have, if it had, it should have been maybe put in that letter, or maybe it just never came up at all.
We could limit the discussion to those issues so we're not repeating information that has already been provided at previous meetings. A project of this magnitude and complexity could have a significant impact on this rural neighborhood and on the community. It is our responsibility to be thorough and to respect the process that is outlined in our regulations and to follow the regulations that have been put in place for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any thoughts?
And if another letter comes in.
Microphone, microphone.
If another letter comes in two weeks.
Well, there's a limit, of course, but...
Yeah. How long will we open to look?
I think this is largely my concern about the need for a special exception, given what I've been able to find looking at all the paperwork we've gotten and doing some research online. I just feel that, I feel very strongly that Riverwoods has been granted two special exceptions, was granted two special exceptions for the administrative building. It's my opinion that in going forward, without being granted a special exception, they are in violation of the special exception that has already been granted to them. And it seems like there's a precedent that's been set. They've had two special exceptions. Why is this different from that? I feel strongly that that needs to be examined. And there has been, I haven't found any record of any talk of special exceptions, and I haven't seen any paperwork that indicates that a special exception was either not granted or said not to be necessary. If there is such a thing, a piece of paper or some notification out there, that would be something that would certainly put my mind at rest. And I questioned at the last meeting where the ball, I think I used the term where the ball had been dropped. And in looking, again, looking further at this, I believe it's the applicant's responsibility to ask or inquire of the special exception. I don't think it's Doug Eastman's job. I don't think it's Dave Sharple's job to inform them. I think it's their responsibility to make sure that they've gotten all the exceptions, variances, whatever, that they need. And we're here, they are here as advisors and to direct them if they need that or not. So I can't, I'm not throwing stones at Doug Eastman or Dave or anybody in the planning office. I think it was just overlooked and never inquired about. That's, again, that's my opinion. So it leaves me feeling...
So that's one action we could take. If we agree with your thinking.
Yeah, I'm one of many people on the board. And I've tried very hard to look for everything possible to answer questions that I've had, and these are still questions that I can't seem to find answers for. It's not easy. This is not an easy issue. And I felt that, you know, before, it feels like the putting the horse before the cart, which is what we should be doing, of course, but to start talking about conditions, talking about trees, talking about where we're going to pile snow on site, we're going to do any number of things. It seems that we need to come to some conclusion about this before we get into those details. Because those details are going to, well, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
David, can you offer many, any information to help clarify to these people here who might not be aware of the special exemption requirements or whatever? Is there anything that, no?
I, no. I don't make that determination. That's a zoning enforcement. As I stated at the last meeting, I'll reiterate that, I discussed it with Doug Eastman several months ago, that same exact question. He said one was not needed when we did the TRC review and we moved on. That's all I can say.
And Gwen, did you find something that you think says that was needed or just a gray area?
It was my opinion that it was needed based on what had happened with the administrative building. I mean, they came to the zoning board looking for permission to build the administrative building. The zoning board got comments from the abutters and from the public and determined that they could build this building, but it could only be, and I'm not going to get the correct figure, but let's say 5,500 square feet. And they could only have 21 parking spaces and, or 15 parking spaces and 20 employees. And then they came back again, I believe, to be granted some relief in the size of the building, and they were allowed a little bit bigger building. So to me, that's, those were special exceptions that they needed. Why wouldn't they need something, a special exception for a building that's 10 times that size with 100 parking spaces and I'm not sure how many employees? And if they went forward with this, it seems that they would be violating the previous special, the conditions of the previous special exception. That's where this all started in my mind, was the initial project on that site.
Did you say they got the special assessments for the administrative building, but then they also added on to that?
They got another special exception to add a little bit more to that. And that was outlined in some paperwork that we got in our packet a month or so ago. And I did bring it up then, but just as a topic that should be looked at.
I believe they also got special exception for the ridge and for the boulders in that process. Am I correct on that, David?
Yeah.
So in some ways, it seems, it seems like the easiest thing to do would, I mean, as I outlined in my letter, there are choices. You know, we could send it back. We could grant conditional approval on this with the condition that they go back to ZBA. Or we could just ask them to go to ZBA and put this to rest. In doing that, we're not allowing public comment because we've closed the public comment tonight, but...
But the guy that is our expert in-house says it's okay, Doug?
I don't know. I don't have anything that says, I don't have a piece of paper that says it's okay.
Right.
I know he drafted a letter that said that they didn't need a variance, but that's very different from a special exception. And I don't know that it ever came up in a conversation. Maybe it should have, if it had, it should have been maybe put in that letter, or maybe it just never came up at all. Not easy.
No, no, it's not.
Mr. Chairman, are you able to ask the applicant if they're willing to help us out based on what you heard there?
No, it's closed.
I would say from, at this point, no.
So those choices are up to us?
Yeah, we're it right now.
And there may be other choices that I don't come up with.
I mean, where there's doubt, there's not much doubt in my mind, but there's doubt upon the board, then we may need to do that to...
I don't want to put, I just don't want to put words into Doug Eastman's mouth here, but I think he meant that they, I really do think that even though he didn't specifically say the words that... If Doug Eastman thought that they needed to go for that special variance, then he would have told them that.
It's not a variance.
Well, you know what, I'm sorry, I just used the wrong term, but I do believe that Doug would have spoken up and said that that special exception was needed. But that's, I really feel uncomfortable speaking for Doug, but I do believe that he knows his role and he would have said something.
Well, sometimes we, I mean, I...
We've had the discussion, so anyway, it's just how I feel about it.
Big projects, sometimes things get overlooked, and the focus may have been on variances and making it clear that no variance was needed, and it may have just been something that was overlooked. That's the other, the flip side to that, and I don't know the answer to that.
Marty, did you have another comment?
I guess my only thought is, I think you make a reasonable argument here, but at the same time, I'm hearing staff say it wasn't required and such. I don't know where we go.
But I don't know that, we don't know that they said that. That's the...
Well, Dave just said it, listen to him.
Yeah, a couple of times.
I would like to see it on paper.
Yeah, I can say it again, it's not in paper, but I will, you know, I can say it that we had that discussion like I did at the last meeting, and I'll say, and I said it five minutes, 10 minutes ago. That was discussed. No one missed it. Ball wasn't dropped. It was discussed and decided.
If it wasn't, I'm going to be argumentative here. If it wasn't, if it was deemed not necessary, I would love to know why it was deemed not necessary, because it seems like it was necessary, in my opinion, just because of what had happened before.
So just to maybe add to your list of options, and I'm not saying we do this, but I'm trying to figure out a way to like kind of put your mind at ease on this, like one potential option would be to reopen public session for the specific purpose of requesting a letter from Mr. Eastman. I don't, I mean, I don't, would that be on your list of options?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
I don't, well...
And I don't even know if you can do that, because you can't request public comment on a specific topic, but...
Is he public comment?
I don't know. We can't open public hearing tonight. Does it have to be...
Well, if we do, we have to discuss doing it, and then that has to be posted, so...
Has to be posted, so it doesn't happen tonight.
Table and move ahead to the next meeting. So the mechanics, if you will, are in place, yes, yeah.
And then we're on the clock.
I'm not sure we'll get that, your answer from public discussion, if you're looking for documentation. We have whatever we have.
If it's in the TRC meeting minutes.
And Dave has discussed with us before, but...
He says in the TRC minutes?
I don't know if it would be.
Oh, I thought you said it was.
No, Dave just said no.
Yeah.
Well, I don't...
Yeah.
I mean, I've looked at your meeting minutes, they don't get that in depth, just basically what was discussed and it was there, so, topic.
Gwen, did you review the ZBA meeting minutes from previous, when this application was in front of the ZBA, when they were going for variances for height limits and things like that? And there was no discussion of special exception in those minutes? So I feel like if it was a concern of the ZBA, that board would have brought it up at the time.
Right.
I don't think there was ever talk of it at a ZBA meeting. I didn't see anything, I didn't see anything in the minutes that I looked at for the critical meetings, obviously involving Riverwoods. There wasn't anything that I found. I should not be, sorry.
But what I'm saying, if there was a concern, someone would have raised it at that...
Right, I guess what I'm wondering is, I mean, I'm not, I don't know if it's a planning board concern. I mean, I think it's, I don't, I think it's a, you know, we accepted this case as ready to review, meaning that it did not require a special exception or any other variance from zoning. And I think by doing so, we need to review the case on its, as it's presented to us, as not needing that.
I think, I think there are cases when we've sent something back to the zoning board because we've had concerns or questions about a particular issue that's come up, and I can't tell you what that would have been, but I almost feel like we have done that before. And again, I don't, this, I'll fall short in my knowledge here, but it feels like we're kind of the last step in making approvals on something, and if we see something that raises a red flag, that it's kind of on our shoulders to say, what about this? And this feels, it feels like that this applicant is maybe not in compliance with our ordinances, and this needs to go back to Conservation Commission or zoning. I could be wrong, but that's my belief, anyway.
We've done that in the past and corrected that because we're the last stop.
Yeah.
And that takes time longer on the developer's side and our side, so it's more efficient if we do it in that order, so the planning office does it that way now.
Right.
So I think that's why Doug Eastman referred back to what was done with those properties. And I think the reason is that the properties have increased in size and that has stayed with the property. So it has already been granted through previous applications. That's my understanding. Of the boulders and the...
I feel that that's, that's, they're variance issues. I'm not, I don't know that that applies, again, to special exception, but I don't...
Yeah, special exception, yeah, okay.
Sorry to throw this all at you. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have felt good letting it go, I guess. I feel strongly about this, and I certainly welcome any, all, any and all comments and questions.
No other questions? Anything else?
I see the thinking eyes going.
Do we have a motion someplace?
We could. We could put it to test, and you could make a motion, Gwen, and then we can, the board can deal with that.
Oh, really?
Maybe along the lines of requesting the ZBA review the case for the persons of granting the special exception.
Could we do, well...
Or confirming, and maybe it's a confirming thing, I don't know.
So I'm going to ask you a timing question. If we do that, that would be a condition of approval. So we probably, at this point, would go over other issues as they, we're going to do multiple conditions of approval? Does that make sense? Not really?
Not really.
You want this to be one of the conditions?
We typically don't approve things in that fashion.
Yeah.
Because our approval is up to being rejected. So why waste the time?
Well, I was going to say we could grant the site plan application with condition that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on the special exception. Or, or I could go to the last option, which was... I mean, I feel like it's fair for, I think it would be reasonable for us to go, actually with the fourth option that I put on in my letter, and that was to set a date for rehearing and give everybody an opportunity to weigh in on this. That would give the applicant, the applicant's attorney, the public. It would involve re-notifying the public, and, but we'd have to get permission from the applicant to extend this for another amount of time to be determined because the clock ends today for this hearing. So I don't know how that works.
I actually, wasn't the clock, didn't the clock end last meeting? And we, yes, thank you.
So we have a special, this is special that we're here today.
The applicant, right, agreed that we could take one more meeting.
All right. Well, maybe I'll go back to the condition that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on the special exception, and that can be a condition of our approval of this application.
Okay.
That's my...
Is that a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
John, second it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion one more time?
Said we, my, in my letter, I said we could grant the site plan application with a condition, with one of the conditions being that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on this special exception.
So you're making a motion to approve the whole plan?
No, that's why...
I'm so confused, yeah.
Because we've got other, we've got other conditions of approval that we would have to go through.
But I second if it's for discussion.
Yes.
If we don't need it, you can't make, you know, why would you make someone get something if the building inspector says they don't need that exception?
They're just signing, I mean, I think it's...
I don't, if they don't have to do it, how do you make them do it?
I guess that's assuming that they don't, that's saying that they don't need to do it. I'm thinking that this gives them an opportunity that they haven't had yet, maybe to say, we, you do need a special exception for this.
Why, who would say that?
The zoning board or...
Wouldn't they have said that a long time ago?
I don't think it ever came up. It never was reviewed by the zoning board, to my knowledge.
But apparently reviewed by the town building inspector, who said they don't need it.
So, sounds like we're chasing our own tail here.
Yeah. Well, there's a motion and a second.
Motion and second on the floor.
Yeah.
So let me call a question. Could you, again, review that for the board? Gwen, please.
I move that we make a condition of approval, one of the conditions of approval to this project be that Riverwoods would obtain ZBA approval on the second, on the special exception.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, as a procedural matter?
Yes.
I think you've said it a few times, I think it was different every time you've said it.
Okay, that's...
I would suggest putting it in writing.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Wish I had that last one I used.
Rewind the tape.
I move that one of... Okay, I move that we grant the site plant, plan application with one of the conditions being that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on the special exception.
How about the necessary? And then they can say it's not necessary.
Can I point of order? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If Gwen is writing and almost redoing her motion?
Yes.
We have to withdraw the first motion and the second, please. Yeah. So she doesn't have to keep repeating herself?
That's all right, finish writing.
If we could do that first, Gwen.
Okay.
Gwen, if you, can I make a request as you're drafting your motion? Maybe it doesn't start with that we grant?
Okay.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to agree to a motion to grant the whole project.
No, I don't either.
We want to make a motion to add this condition of approval to our, to just add the condition of approval to any future motion of granting. I don't know how to word it, but...
Yeah, boy.
You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying.
To me, it sounds like I'm approving the project right now.
Yeah, I don't, definitely don't want to make it sound like that.
She did say it's one of the conditions, I think.
Yeah, I think the way you said it the last time...
Yeah, I know, the last one was the way I wanted.
That one of the conditions of approval is?
That one. I move that we...
Before you do, can you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I withdraw my previous motion or motions.
And I withdraw my second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The table is clear.
Can't ever write under pressure. I move that we add this condition that... Oh, God. Jen, you're good at writing these. I made a mess.
I could tape it. If you tell me what to tape.
I move that we add... I move that one of the conditions of approval is that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on the special exception.
If necessary.
Okay. Did that work?
Ready to read it now, please?
Oh, again?
Yes, you can make a motion now.
I move that one of the conditions of approval be that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on the special exception.
Okay, is that it? Can I second that, or?
Do we need to second it to talk about it?
We do.
Yeah, okay, you want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Marty. Any further discussion at this point?
Can you read it one more time?
Sure, try. I move that one of the conditions of approval be that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on the, on the special exception.
And, okay. I guess the only question I'd have is, if it goes to the ZBA and they determine it's not necessary, are we saying they need, they need approval?
No, that it's not necessary.
Okay.
Then somehow it should say if necessary.
Just a decision from them.
Right.
But that's, yeah, that's pretty assuming.
That's why you said...
Yeah, that's right.
Do you want to say that they receive?
If I...
I approve, I propose amending the motion to say that the applicant, that the zoning board review the application for... To determine if it needs a special exception?
To review the application to see if a variance is necessary.
A special exception is necessary.
Exception, sorry.
Well, I still think it's the horse before the cart here.
Yeah.
So, was that an amendment?
Gwen, do we, do you have the conditions for a stage?
So, we...
I move that we...
Oh, we have our standard conditions of approval.
Right.
We, our seven that we always apply to pretty much every site plan out there.
Right, yeah.
So, Gwen, before you do that again, because now we have a motion and a second and an amendment on the table.
We need to withdraw the previous.
So, if we can maybe withdraw everything again.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, is that okay? I'm sorry, I don't mean to...
No, you're, we're following rules.
Take over your meeting here.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Just a minute, I'm not sure if I got a second on the amendment.
You did. Oh, on the amendment, we didn't.
Nothing on the amendment.
You're right.
I've just read.
I don't think I got a second.
Nope, you didn't.
So, that is null and void at this point.
That we add the condition.
Before we clean the table off again.
Gwen, are you looking to reword it?
All right, let me try this. I move that we add the condition that one of the, this is awkward, one of the conditions of approval be that Riverwoods, or that the ZBA reviews the application to determine if a special exception is necessary. Does that feel better?
Totally different motion.
It's a different motion, but I'm following what
Is it better, Jen?
was discussed at the other end of the table.
All right, well, let's take a, will you remove your first motion?
I already have.
No, you didn't.
No, Marty, you second it.
I'll second.
You didn't hear me.
I'll second.
I did.
You'll take your second off and second this. Thank you. He's removed and added the second, so we now have a viable motion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, let's read it one more time, so we have some idea what it says. Please.
Okay.
I have it memorized by now.
I move that we add the condition, rather, I move that we add the condition that one of the conditions of approval is that Riverwoods, or that ZBA reviews the application to determine if a special exception is necessary.
So, we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second, yeah.
Oh, Marty, okay, I didn't hear him.
Can we make an action by the ZBA be a condition of approval? Is that fair? I'm just asking the question, I don't know.
That's a good question.
Because then what if the, what if the ZBA says no?
He's staying out of it.
Like, we won't, like, that's, then the applicant's kinda stuck.
I'm concerned they'd say it's necessary, but then if it's necessary, they need it that approved.
Right.
And there's no guarantees in life here, so...
Right, right.
Right. Doesn't, it doesn't, I don't think it works, but that's all right. Maybe pull on it and see what happens. You're thinking about something, Nancy?
No, I just don't, I just don't think this, it works this way. I just don't. I think we've tried three times to word something, that it's still not working.
Let's vote on this one. We need to move to question here.
What if we turn to our own planning office here?
I don't think we can.
And ask for confirmation that that a special exception has in fact been granted, and how that was done. I think that's what you're after.
He's looking for some kind of confirmation, but to what you said, Doug said, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're asking me that? Yeah, I'm not.
I'm not.
This is, yeah, I mean, the public hearing's been closed. You know, everything that's been discussed, I'd be happy to reiterate what I remember was in the record, but that's all I can say at this point.
Mr. Chair, was your question whether or not a special exception was discussed during this process? Then tonight, Mr. Sharples said twice that it was discussed in their meeting.
Yes.
And...
And it was fine.
Right, there was no one, I wasn't in the meeting, so I'm not gonna, but whether it was said that it wasn't needed, or, let me put it this way, if one was needed, I would have to think that someone would've spoke up and said it was needed. So, whether it's in writing somewhere, or...
Yeah, that's part of the TRC process.
Right, that, so, that's just how I'm saying this, is...
Okay, I'm gonna try again.
Okay, you have to withdraw your motion.
I'm gonna redraw my previous motion, I'm sorry.
Can you redraw your second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Let's try this. We could grant this. We, oh, God, we could grant site plan, let me, I'm just gonna read this and then I may change it, so hold off on making any motions. I move that we, that one of the conditions of approval is that Riverwoods obtains ZBA approval on the special exception if ZBA determines that a special exception is necessary.
No, I'm not, okay, I can't talk to the public on this, so, but thank you for...
Did you write that down?
No, I didn't write your...
Ask Riverwoods to go before the ZBA to get a decision. I can, that's fine, too.
I can't.
Okay. This one is I move to ask Riverwoods to go before the ZBA to get a decision relative to a need for a special exception. That eliminates one of the conditions of our, in our approval process, but...
But it accomplishes what you want to accomplish.
Yeah.
I think that begins, makes sense, no?
Okay.
Was that a motion, or were you just reading your draft motion?
I do not write under pressure in front of a crowd. I move to ask Riverwoods to go before the ZBA to get a decision relative to a need for a special exception.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, John seconds?
So, that motion is not a condition of approval?
No.
Okay.
Asking them to get the confirmation on it.
It's just asking?
Mm-hmm.
It's not requiring?
We could change "ask" to "require", but...
But then it's a condition of approval. So, I guess that's what I'm asking, are you, is your motion to be a condition of approval, or?
"Ask" doesn't do anything.
Yeah, we can, we can ask for a million dollars right now.
We can say "shall", right?
Shall.
It's the legal standard.
I move that Riverwoods shall go before the zoning board to get a decision.
I know, this is, this is just a discussion of Gwen's motion, but I'm wondering if what you wanna say is that a condition of approval would be that the applicant request zoning board review relative to the special exception matter. So, they can request, we can ask them to request the review. I think that's a reasonable request. The ZBA can do it or not, but then it kinda puts it back on in ZBA's hands a little bit?
Which is where it should be.
I don't know if you can just go to the ZBA and request a review, but...
I just think it's cleaner the way it is. Asking them to go to the ZBA and get that clarified.
So, you feel that a motion saying, I move that Riverwoods go before the ZBA to get a decision relative to a need for a special exception would be, is that what you're more comfortable with?
I think so, yeah. It's either okay, or they have to get it, yeah. Or it's either have it a, yeah.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my last second. I don't remember what it was on.
I've, I've...
Have a restate the motion, you restate your second. So, restate the motion, please. So, John can...
Well, did we withdraw the...
I have withdrawn previous motion. And here is my most recent iteration. I move that Riverwoods go before the ZBA to get a decision relative to a need for a special exception.
Second?
I'm still confused if that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Somebody second it?
Go ahead.
Well, someone needs to second it, so I can talk about it.
Second.
Okay. I still feel like the motion is not a condition of approval. It's not a, it's not saying that we're gonna add it as a condition of approval.
No, it isn't.
No, we're saying it's gotta be in place in order for us to approve it.
Okay, so that means that we're gonna, after this motion, we're gonna stop deliberations, and that's gonna happen before we continue?
If that's...
I would say so.
Okay, that's, I just wanna be clear that that's what you're asking for.
We'd continue at a certain date.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I don't understand, but if we do this, what does that do to the whole timeframe of this? I thought we would not, I thought we had to act on this.
It'll stand another two weeks, anyway, as a minimum. But I'm not sure when ZBA meet next. Or you gotta be on the agenda to be posted, so it may be more like a three-week thing. I don't know, so...
Do we have that?
Let me say a month, I guess.
That's a good...
Do we have that kind of time?
Well, we are now in an agreed-upon extension from Riverwoods.
Okay.
We don't have that in writing, we don't have a date on it. But that's a verbal agreement, I guess I would say, at this point. They are interested in moving along, obviously, the developer. Time is money, money's time. And this board typically does not, in the business, slow people down. So...
One of the questions is, when does the ZBA meet? Once a month, is that right? So, their next meeting is like next Tuesday? So, the following meeting, if they have one, is the 18th?
So, there's not time to post for next week?
Oh, no.
That has to be out the first of week.
I think their agenda's, I know their agenda's already posted. I mentioned that for this board.
All right.
So, 3/18, March 18.
And that's not guaranteed that they don't already have?
Yeah, it could be booked, anyway.
Okay, are we ready to call a question?
Sure.
Would you like me to have Gwen read it one more time?
Yes, please.
One more time, please, Gwen.
I move that Riverwoods go before the ZBA to get a decision relative to a need for a special exception.
And that was seconded by John?
Yeah.
Let's do a roll call vote, please. Nancy, do we start with you?
No.
Gwen?
Aye.
Myself, no?
I'm a no, also.
No, okay.
No.
Okay.
Oh. I'm gonna vote yes.
So, that, that motion fails.
All right, now we...
Well... We could move ahead on the contingency use permit, if we wished. Although typically, we do all of our approving at one meeting. But that doesn't, I mean... How's the board feel about moving ahead?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we?
Okay, all right.
We have...
So... What, we got five conditions set? Dave, we got five conditions for a contingency use permit?
Seven standard ones.
Seven.
I just wanna double-check the file to see if any CUP condition was recommended, unless somebody has that. to see if any CUP condition was recommended, unless somebody has that memo there. I looked for it, I can't seem to find that we have the Conservation Commission memo. There's recommended the CUP, I know they recommended the CUP for approval, but was it as presented or with a condition? But I'll give you these, you can read these.
In my car.
Okay.
But if you're on the CUP, then just give me a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I think it was the last meeting, it was in there, right? In that packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's deceiving.
To read?
I hope not.
So while we're waiting for Mr. Sharples, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure, why not?
During a previous meeting, I was really concerned about traffic, construction traffic, and I was told that
Yes.
the applicant was only going to have flaggers, is that the right? If they were doing anything off-site, which would make, but that the town could have that as, is that something that we can make as a condition? I'm really concerned about a lot of big trucks coming in and out of Oak Drive on a constant basis, five days a week at least. So is that something that, is the board, has the board ever had that as a condition of approval?
Well, we have, we have a plan of where they're gonna be in construction and.
We do, I'm talking about having a flagger available
Oh, a flag.
for those construction trucks.
I see.
That would be going in and out seven times a day if this gets approved, assuming this gets approved. Because I am concerned about that hill and big trucks in and out constantly. And there was no plan to have flaggers there?
That could be a condition.
That's what, I've never asked, and I haven't been on the board where that was once, so I wanted to confirm that that was something.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get this to me to read?
No, are you on the conditional use permit right now?
Yes.
Is that what I heard? Okay, I did, 'cause something triggered, said I, the COMCOM, I think. So they recommended approval with a, with one condition. A deed restriction or conservation easement for the 3.53 acres of the Grinnell parcel
Yes.
in quotes, will be executed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy with conditions similar to Southeast Land Trust or Town Held easements.
I think there was also something in the wording from Conservation Commission, or it was from Kristin, about seeding proposed to minimize invasive plant encroachment. And that may be on the plan set, I don't know, but if it isn't, that was something that they were concerned about.
I believe that was something that was already added to the landscaping plan, yeah. The applicant reviewed where the driveway was and there were additional plantings added.
Okay. Nancy, could I have that sheet, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I wasn't sure what I was supposed to do with it.
No, I can read that, I mean, I think you usually take the conditional use permit as a separate vote.
Yes.
That's what you were deliberating and voting on? And then when you get to the site plan, I'd be happy to read our standard conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's the board's wishes.
So did you wanna go ahead, oh, these, okay, yeah. No, no, wrong sheet. Yeah, let me think about, the seven conditions they need to meet to get the conditional use permit. I believe five or seven?
Seven.
And I didn't bring all my paperwork tonight. Because I know that was included in the packet.
You could pull it up.
Oh, okay.
I didn't see it in the packet.
It's in the.
Previous packet.
It's in the.
Yeah, and I didn't.
Oh, the letter?
Yeah.
From the applicant, okay.
That was all was for the first stack of papers, yeah. I know we've got them. But I wanna make sure we touch base on them.
See, keep telling them about how organized we try to stay.
About this thing?
Well, let's see.
So I have a letter from the applicant dated November 1st, 2024, that responds to, that provides revised comments regarding compliance with criteria listed under Article 9, Section 916B. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to read them, or?
Do you want Jen to read? This isn't dated. Conditional use, writ application. I think it's here, okay. So the first one is the proposed use of centralized health center and associated parking for elderly, cogget care facility is permitted in the underlying zoning district since it will occur on the property which was granted a special exception for the same. So that addresses it here, by the way. We found no feasible alternative design which does not impact the wetland or wetland buffer, or which would minimize such impact on the wetland or wetland buffer. Design of the centralized health center has been constrained from the start by the fact that White, while Riverwoods owns more than 200 acres of property, very little of that is available for the proposed improvements due to the fact that there are conservation restrictions on large portions of it. Similarly, the existence of the gas line easement also constraints the site. Finally, any land which is not already subject to conservation restrictions or other easements is incumbent by the, a buffer at the perimeter of the entire property as required by the extra zoning ordinance. Yeah. In addition to external factors constraining the site, the sign is also has account for underlying purpose to use and size of the building required to effective. I'm reading this for you. I believe, of purpose specifically, the objective of the centralized healthcare facility is not only consolidate service currently spread out over three campuses, but also to provide additional services which meet today's industry standards, including memory care, which is not currently offered at Riverwoods. Excuse me, these factors combined mean that the facility needs to be sized properly to be able to achieve these goals. As a result of these external constraints and the need for a building sized as shown to implement the goals of the central facility, the only location available for the purpose, proposed health center, is that shown on the property proposed plan. Not sure I'm reading the right thing. Are there questions that you need to meet, am I on the right page?
I think.
No, excuse, I'm talking to a.
I think you're reading basically, there's the seven criteria, and this is the applicant's response to each criteria.
Okay.
I don't have the seven criteria listed in front of me, but I have the same document and it's.
Okay. So these are the responses to those questions?
Is that one dated November 1st? Because I believe there was, there was one submitted and then.
And there's no.
November 2nd.
Oh, November 1st, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's at the top of the page.
So it's the right one, it just, yeah, I think it might be helpful for people to hear what, which question, which criteria each answer is responding, each comment is responding to.
So these are the responses?
These are the responses to the specific criteria.
So I'm on the right track then? I just wanna make sure we review these responses thoroughly. Wetland, the number three. The wetland report from Gulf of environment services provides evidence showing that functions and values of wetlands in the area be developed and shows the impacts to such wetlands. The report also concludes that, to the extent feasible, the proposed development is not detrimental to the function and value of wetlands or the greater hydrologic system. Of particular note is that the wetlands in the area of development are generally of lower value than that of other wetlands on the property. See section I dot IV of Major Mainpack dredge and fill application hereafter, in here and after wetlands application, section five. Written narrative, section five, relative function and value of wetlands delineating, delineating report, page two of two copies of which are enclosed. Excuse me, number four. Design of the construction of the proposed improvements will, to the extent feasible, be accomplished in a manner so as to minimize detrimental impact to the wetland and wetland buffer. Where possible, the plans utilize retaining walls and steep slopes to emphasize vertical development and reduce the wetland or wetland buffer area that would otherwise be needed. Reducing the amount of land area needed means that the detrimental impact to the wetland-wetland buffer will be minimized. Further, we intend to use borrow intention pond, AKA rain gardens, as part of the design to appropriately retreat stormwater to improve the quality on of the runoff. Okay, the fifth one is the proposed development of the centralized healthcare center is designed will not create a hazardous to an individual or public health safety or welfare by loss of wetlands because, as noted in the wetland report, the function and value of the subject wetlands is generally of lower value than what in other wetlands on the property. And to the extent that any of the wetlands do have higher value, then the loss of such wetlands will not result in hazard to the individuals or to the public health safety or welfare because we are minimizing stormwater peak rates and thus minimizing the risk of flooding. Additionally, for the stormwater, that does leave the property, no hazard will be, that does leave the property, no hazard will be created as it will be with the property treated in accordance with the state and local regulations. Okay, and the sixth one in a moment. Applicant is not proposing an increase in wetland buffers elsewhere on the site as the remainder is of it is already developed or protected by existing conservation restrictions. Notwithstanding the applicant's inability to provide expanded buffers, the applicant does propose that a portion of the buffer impact be used for restitution, restoration purposes where an existing house, driveway, and septic system are being removed. Moreover, the application is making a contribution to the state's aquatic resource medication, ARM, fund in placing 3.73 acres of land into conservation, which we spoke of earlier in the Conservation Commission's report. A conservation restriction status that, which will offset the 2.61 areas, acres of wetland buffer to be disturbed. The proposed area is to be converted, excuse me, is to be conserved as adjacent to existing conservation easement held by SALT, and the acreage will consist of both upland and wetland. And number seven, only a small 84 square feet section of temporary wetland impact is proposed in association with the removal of a driveway culvert in the buffer restoration area. There are no other temporary impacts included in the proposal. However, the planned erosion control measures will provide for erosion and sediment control for the duration of the project. And last, wetlands application has been submitted, and we expect that NHDES alteration of terrain and sewer discharge permits will be filed in the coming weeks. So are there any other questions about the application meeting the requirements set forth? Okay. So we've read in the Conservation Commission piece, and it's addressed here as well.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question about the deed for the Conservation Commission.
Excuse me?
I do have one question on the deed. Is there a timeframe, do we ever designate a timeframe when that deed has to be executed and recorded at the registry of deeds? I didn't hear anything about that.
I'd have to ask Dave that.
Prior to the groundbreaking or something?
I think it's there.
Oh.
Yeah, I'll read the condition again. The deed restriction of conservation easement for the 3.53 acres of the Grinnell parcel quotes will be executed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy with conditions similar to Southeast Land Trust or Town Held easements.
So it's really.
It's, it's gonna be executed, meaning executed means recorded.
Okay.
It's gotta be recorded prior to the issuance of a CO on the building.
Yep.
Okay.
We don't know what that date is.
Okay.
You know, for them.
Yeah, I just, thank you for rereading that for me, but I think that's kinda late in the process for that, but, anyway.
So is that a condition of this approval, Dave? Yes.
Well, that's what the Conservation Commission recommended as a condition for the conditional use permit.
Yes, yeah, all right. So I think we're set on that. Any other comments, concerns about?
Would you like a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion. After reviewing the criteria for a wetlands conditional use permit, I move that the request of Riverwoods Company at Exeter Planning Board Case Number 24-16 for a conditional use permit be approved with the condition that Mr. Sharples just read.
From the, from the Conservation Commission?
Yeah.
Yes, and I'll second.
Okay. We all set with that? This, I think we do by hand vote. So. We'll start with Jen.
By hand or? Aye, yes.
Aye.
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 Jen?
Aye.
Ready to vote, the motion carries, all right, we got that done. Thank you.
I have a few, Mr. Chair, unless anybody else wants to go. Another one I'm not sure how to approach, but we did talk about blasting and the impacts on neighbors and neighborhood structures. I know that there was an agreement that was made when probably the ridge was built, and I don't know what the agreement was. We talked about it at one of our meetings. And I think one of the neighbors, it might have been Ruth Hooton, who had worked out an arrangement to have Riverwoods available and willing to compensate her if there was structural damage, like to her foundation, if there was blasting. What can, we've done this before with other projects, just to help protect the neighbors, neighborhood if the blasting is occurring close to someone's house. I know we've done it before and I don't.
I remember it was done once, I remember it, but it was at the applicant's suggestion. It was not the planning board imposing the condition. The applicant suggested it and the, and the planning board incorporated. That's the only one I remember that I've been here. If it was prior to that, then I don't have any memory of it.
Might have been prior.
I know we did one on a prior project, but it was proposed by the applicant.
Oh, dear. I'm batting zero for two here.
No, I'm just saying, that's, that's just the history. I'm not saying what you can and can't do here, I'm just saying that was. I'm not saying what you can and can't do here, I'm just saying that was the, and I know that because I read it like yesterday, too. Someone asked me a question on that very project, and I read that like yesterday, that's why, it's very fresh in my mind.
I wish I could remember. Well, does the board have any thoughts on that, or shall I skip to the next one?
I believe, and I don't know this for sure, but you need to get some kind of permit for blasting that has, as part of that permit, there's all kinds of conditions and whatnot that might cover damage to adjacent parcels. I don't, I'm obviously not skilled in that, but I don't know if it's something that we would necessarily need to require. I think that might already be regulated elsewhere.
Okay. Well, that puts my mind at rest a bit. Okay. Are EV, do they have EV stations here? Are they required, Dave? What are our requirements? That would apply here?
Well, not charging stations.
Charging stations?
No, not charging stations. We don't require charging stations, we just require conduit, pipe in the, be ready.
Okay. Does that need to be, that's probably already been spoken about?
No, I believe, but not, that's something, you know, the TRC looks at, I think it was one of the comments, but not bad to just put it.
Okay.
You know, 2% of the parking shall be EV-ready. Add that as a condition, just to cover it.
Okay.
Well, no, EV readiness shall be provided as set forth in the regulations.
Okay.
I would say that.
Yeah.
You've got that.
Yeah, I'll write it down.
Thank you.
Nancy, you'd spoken about flagging when the construction and the trucks...
Yeah, I just don't know how to word it. I've been thinking about this. I mean, it would have to be some specific language, right? About, how do you word something like that? Peak, so many trucks per day, I don't know. It was just something I brought up before, and I got the answer from the construction company.
Okay.
But, or actually, I got a response to from Riverwoods, but it was only, there was no intention of having a flagger. So, I don't know. I don't know what the standard is. Is it, you know, four trucks going in and out a day, that a flagger would have to be, it would be more than that? I mean, that's an expense to have a flagger, but I'm concerned for safety in that area.
What about, I mean, would you be comfortable with signage? Like, so as people are approaching the intersection, maybe the, they have to put signage up saying like caution, construction vehicles enter and exiting or something?
They have to anyway, don't they?
Maybe.
Yeah, well, I guess it wouldn't hurt, as Dave just said, to go in, it wouldn't hurt. I just wish drivers paid attention to signs and rules and laws. But, yeah, I guess, because I have been thinking about this since I asked the question, and I just can't come up with a good perimeter of how to word that. I mean...
But say signing, construction signing is appropriate to the project.
Yeah, that would have to be out and taken down at the end of business day, though, because having those signs out there is another danger. I just see signs that are just like pushed on the side of the road, and I'm always waiting for bicyclists to hit them and be impaled by one, but that's just my imagination. Yes, thank you, Jen. That is helpful.
Yeah, I mean, construction happens all the time, and I feel like people, there's hazards, but construction companies are usually, and Severino's very good.
Very good.
Like, I feel like they've done this before.
You know, it's because we've changed the light, and it's because of what the people crossing that street itself, and it's on a corner, pickpocket entrance is right there. I just, I am concerned about it, but yes, thank you. That's a good alternative to a flagger. It's just to have the sign.
Dave?
I could add that, you know, one of the standard conditions of approval is a pre-construction meeting, and at that pre-construction meeting, we require construction schedule so we know kind of what's happening. They don't know that right now.
I know.
So, we get that information with a project schedule, and we talk about like police, fire, DPW, myself, we all kind of talk about all the issues. We talk about those things, about flagging, construction safety, you know, what's needed out there, is any police detail required and so forth.
Okay, so I'm comfortable with that.
That is discussed at the pre-construction meeting. If you, I'm not saying, you know, you don't have the right to add a thing, I'm just telling you what the process is.
At the very minimum signage. And if there's a construction schedule that's a heavy schedule with a lot of trucks, and I just said a lot with no number, I don't have a number, that a flagger would be considered. But there'd have to be two because of the line of sight in that area.
Generally, flaggers are out there if there's some impediment in the right of way. Usually, flaggers aren't there for...
So, just trucks coming in and out?
Turning right or left. I've never seen a flagger for that.
I have.
You know, I mean, unless you're getting like a police detail, where you're getting so many back to back.
I don't want to keep adding thoughts.
You need to stop traffic, but...
All right, signs and just, I will trust that our police chief, our Friday chief, you will make sure our public is safe when the construction starts. Thank you.
Anything else down here to, needs to be done or conditioned?
Nothing I can think of that hasn't already been brought up.
Is that with landscaping, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I sort of mentioned this at the last meeting, and I know people are kind of looking to me to comment on the landscaping plan, but I thought that the applicant was really responsive to some of the...
Request?
The requests and concerns, and I really appreciated the visualizations, and I appreciated those being sent to us, you know, so I could really kind of scrutinize them and get a sense of really what the visibility would be of the building. And I'm quite satisfied with the landscaping plan, so, yeah.
Okay.
I've got more.
Okay.
One's got a list.
We haven't talked about the pickleball court, and that was something that we were, many people are not happy about, and feeling that the removal of one or both would help in the screening efforts. And I think we should talk about that.
Okay.
Sort of get a sense for how people feel.
As I remember, they said there was no other place to put it.
Well, it's a lot of property there for that.
Believe there's a lot of land there, but...
That one was a hard one for me to accept.
Yeah. They have screened a little more that we requested, but I think, I mean, I brought this up last time, I would think they might want to screen it from the building itself because if you're in one of the beds, people outside making a lot of noise as they do playing. I think it behoove them to move it. I don't know whether we need to make them.
Yeah, I think I agree with John that it's not really, I wouldn't probably make it a requirement. I think it would be a nice thing to do. It is, you know, pickleball's loud, it's a problem. There's towns now that are outlawing pickleball, townwide, because the noise is quite a nuisance, but that's, I don't think for us to regulate, so it's not part of this application. I think they've achieved the screening required without, I don't think we need that space for extra screening necessarily.
And they may figure at some point that they do need to move it.
Yeah, or it doesn't get used.
Yeah.
It's there for the neighbors to use and for the public.
Yeah, but for the neighbors, you don't want to hide it someplace, but...
Okay.
No, but couldn't we suggest more buffer plantings or something around, around the pickleball court?
Not going to help with the noise, not much anyway.
It's even noisy under it, huh? I know it's noisy at the Y. Turn my hearing aids off.
It's an issue around the country.
No, I understand, so...
There's a nice quiet park next to you, and they put a couple of courts in, and you want to sell your house.
Okay.
Okay, well, anyway, it was just a thought.
No international competitions.
I know, so not yet.
All right, should I keep going?
Sure.
All right. This came up at a previous meeting, request that there be no parking on Pickpocket Road during construction, and how...
You did bring that up.
Where the, no construction vehicles...
And they agreed to that.
Should be parking on Pocket Road.
I would support that as a condition of approval.
Yeah.
I don't think that's even in the plan, but you can...
No.
No, but it happened, like, construction...
The town have to do it.
If you want to confirm it, then make it a condition.
I think somebody at one point said that's...
I think to be a police offense and to get a ticket, it has to be done by the select board.
Yeah.
To make it, and if public parking is allowed on Pickpocket, then I don't think they can enforce that.
When I do my report on Tuesday night, I will bring it up and ask them to maybe put it on a future, have a conversation, and we'll go from there.
All right, that works for me.
Okay.
And you could word the condition of approval to say, you know, recommend to the governing body that no parking on Pickpocket Road or something like that. But then, I think the select board would have to, they couldn't single people out. It's either nobody or the public. I don't think they can pick and choose and say...
Oh, gosh, you would have to be no parking, period.
You know, if people are here from Riverwood, you can't park, but if you live here, you can. I don't believe they can make that.
You cannot do that, no.
It's either parking or no park.
You shouldn't be parking on Pickpocket Road anyway.
Is there parking now allowed on Pickpocket?
Yeah, yes, because there were a few people, they sent letters with complaints that cars were being, were parking.
So, but is it in our ordinance that there's no parking on either side right now?
Right now, no, there are no signs here. It's not, there's parking allowed, there have been a few, yeah, that had nothing to do with us. Yeah, and fairly recently.
Okay, well...
So, you're going to take that?
Yeah, I'll bring it up because the agenda's already been done. I'll talk to the chair in the morning.
Another request, and this, yeah, this goes back a ways, that there would be no increased traffic on Timber Lane by commercial vehicles, and that the applicant notify vendors, et cetera, that they are to continue to use White Oak Drive to access the woods and the boulders and not use Timber Lane, which is...
Well, as, I'm going to speak for Dave here. Is there such traffic on Timber Lane Road now?
There was originally.
So, we're going to have somebody stand out and say, where are you going? I'm going to hold, okay?
No, I think the vendors have honored the request.
Okay.
But just to reiterate that, especially since there is going to be construction, and they may think with that, I'm going to go up Timber Lane.
Yep.
There was also a discussion about possibly planting some of the trees for screening, and I'm thinking, well, I'm thinking that that was, well, it could be in numerous locations, but in places where they won't get damaged during the construction process, it just will give, if the construction process is going to take a few years, there was a desire, I don't know who it was, but to have trees, some trees planted to give them a head start. Typically, trees aren't planted until the construction has been completed. So, where there can be, where there can be trees planted, maybe along the parking area by the pickleball courts, maybe along 111 by where the old driveway to the house that's being taken out was, those could be planted now. Is that, you're looking at me?
I'm just wondering, is that a requirement, or is that just at their discretion? Because usually how projects work is they mobilize the different subs. They don't, you know, they don't mobilize the landscaper and then mobilize the, you know, the earthwork.
I think they agreed that they would be willing to do that when it was brought up at the last...
Okay, so, no, I'm just asking, what specifically are you saying?
Yeah. I'd like to see a requirement that they plant.
In what sequence?
Plant, it would be whenever, whenever they could plant, I guess, because it would be in an area that does not, would not be affected by the construction.
So, the first planting season, appropriate?
Probably maybe this fall or...
So, that sounds like area that's been leveled and seeded.
Or not even touched at all.
Like along 111.
Yeah, well, along 111 near the pickleball courts.
Give it a chance for it to grow before.
And these people are going to be living with this building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if they can plant trees in, that would be helpful. There was also a question about vegetation that is planted for screening purposes. And I, yeah, I think that this was what the intent was. Vegetation that is planted for screening purposes should be replaced at any time should they die or have to be removed for some particular reason. So that, and that would be in perpetuity, so that there will always be screening available for the abutters.
That's already a standard condition.
But that's usually for just a certain number of years, isn't it?
Nope.
It's in perpetuity?
All landscaping shown on plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced no later than the following growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. As long as the site plan, so it is in perpetuity unless they get a new site plan. Because if you say perpetuity, then they go back and they change the plan, they can say, well, wait a minute, the new, the old plan has to follow the new.
Gee, would that ever happen?
It might, it might, but this is in perfect, well, as long as the site plan remains valid. That means as long as that, that building's there.
All right.
Those trees have to continue to be replaced if they die.
All right, I thought it was for just a limited time. I did not realize that. All right, let me see. No increased traffic, removal of pickleball, possible planning, no parking. Construction times, when do we, when do we...
7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
It is 7?
It's late.
7:00 to 10:00.
10:00 PM.
7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, that's what the, that's not a planning board, that's a select board construction noise policy.
I was shocked, too.
It's brutal.
Assume at 10 o'clock, they're inside painting.
There's no assumption, they can be running trucks right up hillside.
In the summer, the sun doesn't go down until...
And then if they do work at night, they do have to get select board, you know, in rare cases, people have asked, they got to go to the select board and ask for permission for a wave between the 10:00 PM and the 7:00.
Okay.
Okay. I think I just have, well, maybe three more. At one of the meetings, another individual brought up covers for construction trucks carrying dirt, gravel, and thought that we should have, and can speculate, I don't know if that's something that goes to...
I think that's law, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
It's a state rule.
It's a state law.
Is it a state law?
Yeah, they all have their coverage.
So, it's up to the police department to be like enforcing, right? I mean, I don't...
As a frequent walker around Riverwoods, and I brought this up at a couple of meetings, I'm very concerned about the parking that's been added to the property, particularly at the boulders, at the ridge. There's one, one area that started out as just dirt parking, and then it was eventually paved, and the parking is far from adequate for, the design of the parking lot, if you want to call it a lot, is really suboptimal. They go over the, they go over the front edge, and they're sticking out into the, a truck is out in the road, and then there's a big no parking sign written on the pavement itself, and I don't know what the sequence was, I don't know if that was there, and then the parking was put in, or if the parking was put in, and then there's a no parking, like they don't want people parking in the lot and on the road and back of them. I'm not sure what happened. I guess my point is that parking has been put in, to my knowledge, without any approval from anybody, and if they're going to be adding all these new residential units where in, on these campuses where there currently are medical facilities, they're going to have a lot of extra people, a lot of extra residents, and we don't, I don't know where those people are going to park. So, my, my request is, and I don't know if that is, if that's appropriate... So my, my request is, and I don't know if that is, if that's appropriate, to put that on the condition for this, but given that it's...
Let me remind you that this, you're out of the purve, purvey of the, this proposal, and we will have a proposals that'll come in as they move ahead.
Okay, but they haven't before, and I don't want that to happen again, that's, and I don't know how to address it.
Well, yeah, our hands are tied, I think, to a certain extent, because of the...
Although it's, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm being...
That's all right.
It's all, kind of, one big project.
I understand.
So...
It's one huge...
I don't know how, I don't know how to address it. I think they should come before us if they're gonna be adding, trying to add parking. The other thing with this particular lot that I described is it's right next to conservation land and wetland, so it's, it's not in a place that I think we would have ever agreed to have parking if they had asked for an application.
Yep.
That's my opinion. But it's, it's close to the intersect, it's close to the connect, connector road that goes between the ridge and the boulders.
Do you have it? Uh, yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to talk offline about this, it seems more of a, you know, conservation sustainability, being a planner, get, you know, get us involved, me involved, we'll take a look at prior plans to see what was approved and what's, compared to what's out there, but I'm not sure it's, it's not on these plans, but I'd be happy to have that conversation. Have you brought it to Kristen's?
No, I haven't, I just, I just thought that this needed to be addressed, and given that this is kind of part of their big plan, I thought that this would be a starting point for raising the issue. And it's pretty tight, there aren't, I, I don't know where else to put, you put parking up there, because it's either conservation land or it's wetland, and I don't think that that should take place, but anyway. Lastly, and we, it's closed, it's, the session has been, the public is not invited to speak in this, but I also asked the question, I'm very concerned about the pedestrian crossing on 111 from people going from the woods to the medical facility, and they were gonna look into this and get back to us, and kind of, that was asked at the last meeting, so I don't know if anything has happened with that, and it's, I don't have a condition to put in to the...
But they said, did they say they were gonna provide transportation?
Yeah, they were gonna look into it.
No, I think...
Oh, they were gonna provide, but this is for people who...
Yeah.
Choose to walk.
Well...
It's three lanes, if you wanna...
That's a poor choice.
Yeah, well...
But it's a state highway, so the state gets involved there.
I realize that, I realize that, I just think it's...
Nuts not to say.
Not good.
I pointed out this rail trail in Gosstown that actually has a traffic signal that's implemented, so I talked to the highway engineer about that, he said he was aware of that, I don't know.
He is.
But again, you'd have to get through the state, blah, 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 but there is such signage in New Hampshire, yeah, on 114.
Well...
Gwen, did, I mean, excuse me, Jen, did you have anything on your list? Gwen's done a pretty thorough job here.
I know, I know. Um, I mean, not really, I think the, the, um, I didn't really have anything related on the, the site plan specifically. The crosswalk was a concern, but, you know, looking into it, it's like, it's a state road that was a state project, I feel like if there's concerns about the safety of that crosswalk, unfortunately, the applicant doesn't, I, I don't think would have any jurisdiction over changing it, it would be a complaint to the state that would be required. So unfortunately, that's, it was just not good design, I think, it's, you know, we need to get more involved in these roadway projects. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think otherwise, like, I share concerns that I think a lot of people do, that this is a very, somewhat out of place facility, not out of place facility, obviously, it's, you know, part of Riverwoods, but it's a, it's just a big development, which I don't, I think is taking a lot of people by surprise. But as far as the site plan goes, I, I don't really have any concerns about it, I think that the grading and drainage is good as far as I can tell, the landscaping is good, I think the, um, yeah, I mean, the lighting, the architecture, everything has been really well considered for the facility that is being proposed.
Thank you. Marty, any thoughts?
Uh, I would just, with, we got to the pedestrian crossing, I would, I would agree it's, it's challenging for a pedestrian to cross the street there, but it seems to me that the applicant has, has done what they can do by providing, what is it, to some kind of transit or bus. So if, if, if somebody wants to get to the other side, the applicant's provided a way to get there safely.
Okay, a good point.
They can get out and walk from there, I guess.
John?
No, I, I think they've addressed everything we brought up, I, too, like, the landsit, landscaping, I could nitpick a couple of selections of trees, but I won't.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm not an expert, but some of the things I've seen, I might not have done it somewhere, but I'm, I'm not qualified to really judge that.
Nancy?
Other than, I'm gonna second what Jen just said, I, I don't think that when this was initially thought about that it was gonna be this big of a building added to this, but that aside, it's allowed, and they've done it within our ordinances, so I don't have anything else to add.
Would anybody like to make a motion, site plan motion?
Dave, do you have all of yours?
We have more discussion.
Yeah, I suggested ones, would you like me to read them now?
Yes, please.
Our standard seven, but I read them every time, so I will do it again. Number one, an electronic ASBIL plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the use of the parking lot. This plan must be in DWG or DFX file format, and in NAD 1983 State Plan, New Hampshire FIPS 2800 feet coordinates. Two, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting, the SWIP, Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Three, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Four, the storm water system operation and maintenance report, and the storm tech maintenance log in the storm water inspection and maintenance manual shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually, on or before January 31st. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. Five, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans, all appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees...
Excuse me.
And inspection fees, including third-party inspections, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Six, all landscaping shown on plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced no later than the following growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes. Seven, the applicant shall submit the land use and storm water management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP submittal must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting. Eight, EV charging readiness shall be provided as set forth in section 9.13.8 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations, and the details, and details shall be shown on the final plans. Nine, recommend signage on Route 111 regarding construction vehicles entering and exiting. Ten, I took a stab at this one, landscaping, landscape plantings that will not be disturbed by construction activities will be planted as soon as possible after the pre-construction meeting has taken place.
Yep.
That's it, that's all I got today, I don't know if I captured all of it.
I think you got them.
Yeah.
Did you get that one, was there one about construction traffic, or did I?
Oh.
Well, the construction sign?
The sign.
No, the, you, you were saying no construction traffic on Timber Swamp Road, or maybe a swamp saying like...
Yeah, I don't, I, I didn't capture that, like, what that was, that would have to maybe be in writing, I, I didn't, I, I don't know what we're saying.
There's no construction vehicles, would use that as access?
Yeah, maybe it's just like they put signage up to direct their vendors.
Construction vehicles for this project?
For this project, yeah.
During, during the construction process, that, that vendors should be notified that they are, continue to use...
So those, that's non-construction traffic you're talking about?
Oh, yeah.
Mainly, mainly construction...
UPS and, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, mainly, yes, thank you.
So I'm not clear on what is being asked.
That Riverwood's...
Construction vehicles, is it simple, construction, no construction vehicles for this project on Timber Lane?
No vendors, so vendors, vendors with, like, they have trucks going in to deliver food, food service trucks.
Now?
Yeah.
Trailer trucks?
Yeah, okay, not, not associated with the construction.
No, no, only, only by the fact that they would be avoiding the construction area on White Oak and choose to go up Timber Lane, so I'm requesting that they remind their vendors that they are to continue to use White Oak Drive.
White Oak Drive.
Not Timber Lane, and they don't, they typically don't use Timber Lane now, and that...
So you're saying Riverwoods reminds...
Should remind their vendors or other delivery vehicles.
Remind their vendors?
Request them.
Okay.
Or other, what?
Or other delivery, just other, delivery vehicles mainly.
Vehicles to continue to use...
White Oak.
To use White Oak Drive.
That was a problem...
Does that sound right?
Way back, yeah.
Okay. Riverwoods reminds their veniers, vendors or other delivery vehicles to continue to use White Oak.
And not Timber Lane.
That would be 11, correct?
Huh?
That would be number 11?
That would be number 11, it's advisory, you're just asking the Riverwoods to remind them that.
Yeah, I understand that.
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure enforcement, I don't know who would, who would call, what, how that would be monitored, I mean, people would call and have a complaint, I, I'm just not sure how would, how would we do that.
We, they did that previously, and I don't know exactly how they approached it, but, but there was a problem because delivery trucks were using Timber Lane.
And now they're no longer?
And it dropped considerably when they were told that they should use White Oak Drive.
Okay.
So they should be familiar.
So is this good enough, though?
Yeah.
What I wrote? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I will move, that's a request of Riverwoods Company at Exeter Planning Board, case number 24-16, for site plan approval be approved with the condition, following conditions, loving conditions, as stated by our town planner, Dave Shuffles.
Second.
Second, okay, I'm a second, you did, thank you, John. Hand vote, that work?
You're the chair.
Okay.
Your call.
All right, we'll start with you, Nancy, hand vote, please.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your time, thank you for your patience, sorry you couldn't say anything, but it is what it is.
But this has microphones.
I wasn't thinking of that.
Are you still in?
We got minutes.
No.
No, I'm not.
It's over by the time you drive home. Keep staying.
Your windows help.
Oh, good, yeah.
Yeah, I put the three in, and I have, I, we're both, we're both like at home, and I sit, I sleep in the side of the bed, it's closer to the double window, and it's much better.
Thanks, Dave.
Wow, good to hear that.
Yeah, if they do it again next year, I'll spread the word.
I want to show the wood, try to find somebody to head it up.
Thank you.
Project.
Yeah, it is, I couldn't believe it.
Because John, John...
Thanks for your patience.
But it might be slippery, something in the way.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks for your concern.
Why we're here. Nice to see you.
Happy retirement.
Okay, the board is gonna continue the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well, happy retirement when the time comes. Have a good night.
And we're going to, uh...
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I can hear you.
You can, well, wait a second.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna continue the meeting now with our minutes.
Oh, yeah.
So we don't end, so we don't get further behind in minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
First ones are January 9th.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 9th, 25.
I'll second.
All right, Gwen, do you have anything on the 9th?
Uh-uh.
This one's...
Jen, you got anything on the 9th?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, as submitted, February 13th, wait a minute.
January 23rd.
January 23rd.
I'm looking at the wrong sheet of paper.
February...
January 23rd.
They haven't done that.
I was reading the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say, Daniel did a good job, he got tonight's minutes done. All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 25.
I've got, I've got...
Hold on a second.
Gwen, you have some, too?
Any comments, Nancy, or?
I do.
Gwen, or?
Yeah, me too.
Okay, oh.
Go ahead, John.
No, you girls do it, if you want. I just have one, on line 69.
69.
Didn't have that one.
Oh, okay, at the end there, A, capital AOT?
69.
I think you meant DOT.
Oh, or alteration of terrain, maybe, I think.
Yeah, it's, AOT is alteration of terrain.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't look right, because the O should be a capital.
Doesn't look, yeah.
That's why we should not use acronyms when we're doing our...
All right.
It's not a microphone.
Okay, Gwen, you're on, again.
This may be right, but Dave could probably answer this.
I don't know if Daniel knows that.
Oh, okay, nope. On line 86, at the end of that, lend of that sentence, frost walls, they would use that as lay down parking area, it goes on to 86 and 87, that doesn't make sense to me.
Take the word "that" out? Frost walls, they would use as a lay down parking, a lay down area.
I think they're saying, I think they're, I think frost walls is part of a list, including during construction of the underground parking and garage excavation and frost walls, they would, it should be and instead of comma.
Yeah.
They would use that as a lay down parking area.
Yeah. Okay.
I would agree.
Okay, that's perfect, I couldn't make sense of that. On line 96, uh, hooten is H-O-O-T-E-N. Line 107, responsive, and I think it probably meant, he meant to say responsible.
Yes, yep.
Uh, let's see. Check that. On line, um, 199.
Wait a minute. Page five, yes.
Yeah, at the end of line 199, uh, it should be stream, not steam.
Okay.
What was it? That's all we had.
I have, I have one, and maybe it's not a big deal, but seeing it's the only time I was quoted in here.
Gotta get a rate.
Which one?
On line 239, it says that I agreed with the court being eliminated, that's not what it said, I, I simply asked, uh, why it couldn't be eliminated, and they responded, they didn't want to, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Nancy, or Jen?
I got nothing.
All right, motion? As amended?
Go ahead, John.
No, we already, we already motioned.
No one seconded it, cause Gwen has to, so go again.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2025.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Second, got it, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, tensions, bingo.
Thank you.
All right. Any master plan discussion date, now that we can speak to each other?
There's a master plan oversight committee meeting, uh, next Thursday, a week from today, uh, and we are going to finally finalize the bike and pedestrian plan, which has been in draft form for a while, but just for a variety of reasons and busyness and so forth, uh, we've, uh, we're, we're getting back to that and finalizing it. I, I will say that we have reached out to Mr. Cameron for his participation in that CO meeting, but I have not heard a response, so if someone else is interested to possibly step in on that committee and at, at least an interim basis, we'd be happy to have someone. Right now, it's John and Aaron, uh, and it's usually three, but we're down to two at the moment.
Well, for our new alternates, there are always committee opportunities and sitting on different committees that relate to.
This one's a good one.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
We usually meet once a month, 8:15 on a Thursday morning, so.
We're not sure what goes on, one of the reports come out.
Apparently, there's donuts.
Yeah, so next Thursday, next Thursday at 8:15, we're meeting right here, well, I don't, yeah, I don't know if it's no acro or the wheel ride room, I haven't checked though, that's not what I do, the barber, Kathy will check the availability and put us in the room that's available, but it will be, uh, 8:15 next Thursday, and also we're gonna finalize the bike and ped plan, then we'll be bringing that forward to planning board slash select board, haven't figured, you know, the, the forum for that, but we'll figure that out, and then we're also kicking off the complete street study. As that was, the select board decided to use ARPA American Rescue Act funding, uh, to fund that, and we contracted with the Regional Planning Commission, so, to complete that study this year, so, they will, we're finishing up the bike ped and then starting the complete streets.
I came across my bike binder, that's what got me looking at, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then the master plan oversight committee, that is, those were goals in the master plan to create the, so, the master plan oversight committee is a subcommittee of this board, just to kinda help shepherd those projects along, uh, and then bring it to the full board for, uh, you know.
And the master. Generally keep it to an hour, so.
We keep it to an hour, yes.
Again, alternates, the master plan is online. It's been, it's, it's near its end, but its layout is terrific, Dave's been able to keep track of it.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
The whole process of that last master plan was, has been well executed, so.
We're ready for another one.
Almost.
Uh, land use regulations are, have been heard, and so, field modifications?
And unrequested.
Field modifications, occasionally there's minor changes to a plan based on something that pops up, and, uh, they used to come to us, uh, and just for ease of smoothing things up, Dave deals with them anyway, uh, he will bring it to us if he feels it's enough of a modification that they may have to come to the board to get permission, but otherwise, they give permission on site to change the curb or whatever the case may be. And bond letters, I think we're all set yet last night.
All set.
All right, does anybody like to adjourn, thank you for coming.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second?
Thank you for tuning in to.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.